Good afternoon, half a day. The Committee on Health and Human Services now convenes this informational hearing on the implementation of the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act. We've invited the Bryan to Nicholas, the governor's chief or policy advisor on healthcare, the insurance commissioner. We also invited Public Health and we have our friends from the insurance industry who's here as well. And so this is, um, this forum is meant to get an update of where we're at on the implementation. And make sure you give us good new information because we want to make sure that we have new information Senator Santos. I know I heard him in the radio today, said we will, we hear the same thing over and over, but want to make sure we get new ones today, okay? So, um. We've also invited, um, the Congresswoman's office and so I was told that they'll have a representative here later this afternoon. Want to thank the Vice Speaker for joining us, Senator Frank Oden, thank you. Okay, and so we'll go ahead now, Bryan with your presentation.
Thank you Senator Rodriguez, some of this is a little bit of rehash, but if you bear with me or tell me to speed it up, I'll go ahead and do so. Alright, uh, just wanted to start off saying we're gonna just go over a few items, summary, very brief history, legal treatment of Guam and territories under PACA or the ACA. Health insurance exchange, exchanges and subsidies, Guam response to the passage of PACA. Magnificent and of full implementation of market reforms and potential corrective courses of action. So just a quick summary, the focus on Obamacare is an acceptable term. Has been on costs and benefits for the residents of the fifty states and also the District of Columbia. Uh, the definition of a state in PACA does not include the territories. So to this day, a question still remain about how PACA implementation will affect consumers and insurance markets in all the territories. American Samoa, Guam, CMI, Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. Uh, PACA amends, as a note, PACA amends the Public Health Service Act that includes benefits to the territories. And this PHSA defines the territories as a state. So the statute is, uh, still remains unclear. US Department of Health and Human Services has determined that PACA's market reforms will apply to health insurance coverage sold in the territories. While the individual employer mandates and federal subsidies will not apply. Uh, implementation of an exchange would have resulted in a limited allotment of subsidy funding that would only cover a fraction of needed funds. Further down the presentation, we'll talk about the amount of those funds and where the remainder of those, of the full allotment was provided to. As a result, the threat of adverse selection driving up premiums is much higher here in the territories than on Guam than it is in the states. Uh, HHS could help alleviate this threat by reconsidering its determination that the market reforms apply to the territories. Or by phasing these reforms in over a period of several years. Uh, Congress could also address the problem by either clarifying that the reforms do not apply in the territories. Or by equalizing the treatment of the territories by applying the individual and employer mandates and providing sufficient subsidy funds. Uh, the territories may also address the issue themselves by adopting the mandate at a territorial level and funding subsidies themselves. As we go through some of the figures, uh, you may come to the same conclusion that this would be a very resource intensive. Alright, that's only a one slide, brief history, March twenty third, twenty ten, President Obama's signed the comprehensive, I'm sorry, comprehensive health reform, the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act. Or PACA into law. The goals for, uh, this health reform, to expand coverage, control healthcare costs and improve the healthcare delivery system. And how is this to be done? Uh, require that most US citizens and legal residents have health insurance, the individual mandate. And to create health insurance exchanges through which individuals can purchase coverage. One of the problems that they had to figure out was how are we gonna pay for coverage for individuals that apply? And the exchange was supposed to be a major mechanism to bring that money in. For market reforms and consumer protections to work without driving up premiums on Guam or the territories. There's a need to ensure that people do not wait until they become sick to purchase insurance. Item one, requirement that most individuals obtain health coverage or pay a tax penalty, the individual mandate. And that larger employers provide coverage to their employees or pay a tax penalty, the employer mandate, is one item. Uh, next was open and special enrollment periods for coverage in the exchange. And lastly, premium and cost sharing subsidies to help low and middle income individuals afford coverage. Uh, the legs of this stool are weakened as individual employer mandates do not apply here on Guam. Guam also is not establishing an exchange and the funds available for subsidies will not be sufficient to cover all eligible individuals on Guam. As a result, the risk of adverse selection will be significantly higher than it is in the states. PACA gives the territories the opportunity to establish exchanges, but does not require that they be established. So if a territory does elect establish an exchange, such an exchange is to meet all the requirements, meet the same exchange establishment, consumer choice. And financial integrity standards contained in part two of the subtitle, dealing with exchanges. I think, uh, one of the other territories, Puerto Rico, wanted to take the money and create their own style of exchange or a hybrid of sorts. And they were told initially, uh, that can't be done, you have to adhere to the requirements in the Affordable Care Act. PACA also provide a pool of one billion dollars to be expended over six years for the exchange, exchanges in the various territories to be split among the territories. These funds may be used to fund premium and cost sharing subsidies for eligible individuals to enroll in qualified health plans through an exchange. If the territory, if the territory elects not to establish an exchange, these funds may be used to fund the territory's Medicaid program. So I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to, uh, Mr. Jim Gillen.
So that, all that means is we, we have available another twenty four million dollars. That needs to be matched by forty five percent, so we could have forty three million dollars available over a six year period. We're still trying to, um, get CMS to translate that for us. Uh, we think it's not available only one lump sum, it's, I think it's available, you know, divided by six years. Uh, we also have another large pot which we've talked about before, uh, which was initially two hundred and sixty eight million dollars, which needed also to be matched by forty five percent. Uh, we managed to, to, to do some, some things with that, uh, over the last three years by moving certain classes of people off of the MIP program into Medicaid program. These basically were, uh, couples or individuals without children. And that was a special class that was created, um, by this, by this act to, to, in a sense, expand Medicaid. Uh, our problem again is, you know, we, we save some money off of that, that MIP and use that local money to, to match up the, the money that's in the large pot. Um, but we don't know if we can continue to do that. Uh, there are people still coming in, uh, to, to the territories who need services, who qualify for MIP. So that the amount of money that we, we could move out of MIP is not, is not getting, uh, any bigger. Uh, last year, we were able to find fifteen million dollars to match up eighteen million dollars of the, the extra PACA money.
When you did that, was there any commitment that you had? I mean, by utilizing that money, did, did Gov Guam, uh, by virtue of touching that pot, agree to do anything greater than what they're already doing?
Other than adding that, that special class? Okay, it, it had always been, um, CMS's position that we include certain services for people from the FAS. Uh, they're eligible for services under, under the Medicaid dollar. Uh, and those services are emergency services. Okay, inpatient hospital emergency, delivery and human dialysis services are covered under this.
The utilization of this money, did that require any authorization from us at the legislature or the governor by executive order to authorize you to? To, to tap into that additional fund? Because it may commit the, the government of Guam and the territory of Guam to, uh, additional programs that we hadn't anticipated or it had not authorized?
I don't believe so. Uh, as I said, what we've been doing to, to match up that has been using some of the money that, that was available, uh, through the savings from the MIP program. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure whether that needed your approval or not.
No, I'm just wondering whether or not there were any additional commitments on the part of, of the territory that, that, uh, were, uh, were triggered by, by the, by utilizing this money? None?
The only, the only commitment would be that we'd have to match up forty five percent.
Okay.
But Jim, if, if we could, since we're talking about this now, we're talking about the two sixty eight, twenty sixty eight million that Guam is, um, has available to. Um, in our last, um, in our last, um, you know, briefings, that was never really discussed. I know that was something that, that public health had, um, is something that public health is the one who, who's handling. We've only know about the twenty five million that Guam is, um, is able to access if we do set up an exchange, right? And or if not, if for Medicaid expansion, but this is totally different. So can you explain, I think that's where, I think that needs to be done, is where's this two sixty eight from, what is it? Um, it's outside of the regular Medicaid as well?
Yeah, it was additional funding that, that was made available on a, on a second iteration of, of a bill. Uh, that affected the territories because they were left out of the initial, uh, part of the Affordable Care Act. So they made this amount of money available for us ostensibly again for Medicaid expansion. It's to be used over a six year period up to twenty nineteen. What the current balances right now as of the, the, uh, claims that we're able to process, the claims that we know about right now. We have two hundred and forty million dollars left in that, of that two hundred and sixty eight. If we could find the matching, we would have about four hundred and thirty six million dollars.
So are, are we able to, because of the shortfall that we have on that twenty five million, um, that twenty five million? I mean, is there, is, is there a way to use, to have access to this money for anything else than, um, than getting these people who are, um, um, individuals or couples who are childless? Into the program? Can this money be used for, you know, subsidy, for, for, for something else?
One, one of the things that's gonna be happening is that our state plan has to be, has to be revised to include, uh, certain elements of, of a basic, this package of essential benefits. Not exactly the same as what the insurance companies have to do, but it, it is gonna be a more, uh, inclusive, it's gonna have more services. It's also going to have to provide for payments to the behavioral wealth, health and wellness center. So we're already anticipating increases and the problem is again going to be whether or not we can match up money.
Where are you with the state plan? Because I've been jumping all over the hospital about the fact that they need to change their, do I understand their, their Medicaid?
That's another shoot.
Yeah, but it, it is dependent on the, the, the state plan being revised. And I keep telling them, you're all on the executive side, somebody take the lead in rewriting the Medicaid, the, 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 um, the state plan.
Well, the state plan is, is in, is being rewritten. The situation with the hospital basically is gonna be, do they, or what I'm concerned about is if they redo their Medicare cost report and get a different per diem allowance. That's another increase in cost without any increase in services. And we don't know where they are with that, but I know that they've been talking about negotiating that.
But going back to this pot of money again, I'm, I'm a little concerned because if my memory serves me right, a number of state governors refused to accept Medicaid expansion. That's why I asked, did, did the governor affirmatively approve the use of this money? Which may commit us to actually accepting or by, by default, by using that money? Um, commit ourselves to, um, Medicaid expansion, which was not either approved by him, which in other states governors have, didn't refuse. Because they didn't want to take on the additional obligation. Or by us agreeing that if we take on the additional obligation, that we will fund it in, in those, in, in these upcoming years. So I'm just wondering, how, how could this have been done unilaterally without a, a order or, or approval from the front office or from us? If, if as you put it, this money is ostensibly for Medicaid expansion, did you, did I hear you correctly?
No, is it, is it for Medicaid expansion? I, I don't.
It's, it's to include that, that, that special population that's also available to, to just provide services.
That's why, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little concerned is because there, it, you get nothing for free. And I'm afraid that this large pot was to say, you can, you can tap into this line of credit or whatever this thing is. If you agree that you're going to do Medicaid expansion. And should we have been included in the discussion on whether or not we were going to do it? Or at the very least, in some of the states where governors have actually said, you can take your money and you know where to put it because we're not going to do Medicaid expansion. And so I'm asking, did the governor approve it? Because I, I don't think that we did here.
And I think that's something that I wish Tess was here, Tess Archangel, because in, in discussing with her, I understand this is aside from Medicaid expansion. And so that's why I asked, you know, if you can explain what this two sixty eight million is from and, and, you know, what requirements are attached to it? Bryan, do you have more art or somebody can please jump in?
The way the, the grant was given to the, the territories, it's, if you don't, if you opted out of the exchange, then this is, uh, can be used for the expansion, medical expansion. But from what I'm hearing, I don't think there was any commitment by anybody to accept or use it, it's just out there for use. It, it requires, I, I should, I think it should require some kind of legislative appropriation for the fifty five percent. If we were supposed to, if we're gonna use the forty five. The money has to come from somewhere and I, and I think it should be through the legislature.
Actually, and this started in fiscal year twenty eleven. Uh, we have used, um, twenty eight million of the two hundred and sixty eight. So, and I would, I'm gonna say it says fiscal year twenty eleven, so that's October twenty ten. Alright, start date, so the agreement to use this was prior to that. You know, all I'm saying to you is there's a, there's a, there's a bunch of money there, we have an option to use it if we have, if we can match it. Some of it is to take care of that special classification of, of people that was never in, in a Medicare program, a Medicaid program before. It's also there to either increase benefits, revise the state plan to include certain other things. But again, the, you know, the magic is that you've gotta have forty five percent to match up. So as I've said to the feds before, it might as well be a billion dollars. If we don't have the forty five percent, it can just sit there for, you know, for all of this work.
Okay, so this, I guess that's item one for a follow up to, to see where this two sixty eight, what the requirements are and under what, um, if there was authorization needed. As the Vice Speaker has mentioned, you know, where did that authorization come from? I guess that's the first one to, to jot down for our follow up. Um, and then the, the other question I have on this is that, I understand that when you revise the state plan, we're gonna go up to, well, well, right now, we're at a hundred percent, um, on the poverty line, right? Are we, has that been revised already to go to the one thirty three?
We, we are still negotiating with it, it seems like CMS is holding us to a hundred and thirty three percent. So again, that will be another increase in, in, in eligibles.
And that's why I was concerned about the use of this because by, is it, is it committing us to go to that hundred and thirty three percent?
You mean the availability of this extra money?
Yeah, the use of it. Okay, I, I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen, okay? Because if it goes to a hundred and thirty three percent, I'm, I, I am confident that they're gonna lose half their people. Because a number of our Gov Guam employees are within a hundred and thirty three percent of the poverty level. And could drop their private health insurance and, and go to, go to this. So that's why I'm just still trying to ask, ascertain, is there a commitment for us to go to this hundred and thirty three percent by us starting to utilize this money?
I don't think we'll have a choice. It's not because of the, it's not because of the two hundred and sixty eight million dollars, it's because of the, it is because of the Affordable Care Act. Okay, but the two hundred and sixty eight and the Affordable Care Act and the family income limits are kind of separate?
If I may jump in, I think under the Public Health, uh, Public Health Service Act, the rates go up to a hundred and thirty three percent. And, and, and right, it's not our choices.
Um, we're still waiting for them, they are very slow to tell us things sometimes.
Then what are we negotiating? I thought you used the word negotiating.
We're still looking at it, but I'm telling you, what we're saying, what they're, what we're hearing is it's gonna happen. They're just going through the, I won't say it, but it's gonna happen.
It happens, you, is that, is that the plan, the two, you're gonna draw from this two sixty eight and that's when the local match?
I, I think we've, what we've been trying to tell these folks is that it doesn't matter how much you give us if we can't match it. Uh, what are we gonna do? I mean, it's what we do now with our traditional program, we squeeze every claim down to, to next to nothing. We use the Medicare reimbursement rate, which, which, uh, some will go down, but if the hospital negotiates their cost arrangement, that experience will go up. We spent net last year seventy million dollars on Medicaid. And we're, we're lucky that we have the Medicare program that subsidize a great portion of the dialysis cost. Otherwise, we really would have been in trouble. You know, it's, it's kind of, we, we kind of joke a little bit, but I, I will tell you that the cost of healthcare generally rises to the amount of money that's available to pay for it. And we've gotta change the model. We just continue to pay fee for service, uh, and, and even with the, the Affordable Care Act, that's still the model that they're using, even with the accountable care organizations. It's gonna take a while to see whether that has any payoff. We don't, you know, we're not even close to that, so we're still with a, just a basic fee for service model.
So on the, um, twenty three that we've ready to use, so we've already, um, committed to use some of this or as much as we could from the two sixty eight. Is there a plan or is, are we generating a plan of action after twenty nineteen? Because we're putting more people on.
That's what I worry about, what do we do? And that was a question that I, I had just posed to CMS this morning, she had a conference call, was what's happening after twenty nineteen? I, I guess their assumption is that everybody's gonna have insurance, insurance or an expanded Medicaid program. And again, in the states, the first three years of that expansion, the feds pay a hundred percent. And then for every year thereafter, they're gonna pay ninety percent. If I, if I had been able to get that kind of deal, I would have been very happy to do that. So again, we're, you know, we're gonna be still at that, that road where the expectation is there and we don't know at twenty nineteen what's gonna happen. Now, it, we'll, I'll go back and find out how, you know, where exactly the commitment was made for this and if we, we needed your authorization, then we'll have to come back and say, gee, we're sorry, uh, can you help us? Okay, I mean, I, I don't think anybody did this, you know, with any other intent other than to provide, you know, as much as possible as we can. And I think that's how, you know, how good Tess is at her job by finding ways to, to find local match out of unbelievable kinds of things. I mean, you know, the subsidies that you get to the hospital for, for the pharmaceutical fund, uh, movement of the people out of MIP and using that to match up. And it's all fair and square because the feds review every request for a drawdown, so they're very happy with, with the way we've done it. But whether we can continue to do that is another matter with, you know, within the means that we have. Or do we come to ask you for a hundred and ninety six million dollars to match up this two hundred and thirty six? What, what do we wanna, what's our policy gonna be here, really? You know, and I think we all need to do this, not just us on this side, we all need to have that discussion.
If I. Upon the enactment of the PAC, of the Affordable Care Act, the ACA, Guam, um, um, immediately, uh, required that the, um, the insurance comply with the law. They have been, uh, they have been, uh, complying with the law. Uh, all laws effective September twenty third, twenty ten have been in, in, um, in force, uh, have been used by the, uh, the insurance companies. Um, Guam also took steps to ensure that the rates don't increase above ten percent. Uh, if they do increase ten percent, then there's a, a two million dollar rate review grant given by the federal government. Uh, as of today, there's no increase yet, but, uh, through the study of the PACA, several, um, or at least one insurance company has stated that rates, uh, if there's no subsidies and the mandates are, are not there. The rates are gonna increase, uh, dramatically by at least thirty three or fifty five percent.
To, um, on that rate review grant, how much was the grant or?
It was two million dollars.
Jim, and what is it for?
It's for, uh, any, any insurance company that raises their rates about ten percent. Um, those, the increase must be for, uh, the patient for, and not for administrative costs. So we have to look at, uh, what, what the, the increase is, anything above ten percent. We are gonna get an actuary to look at that increase and see if it's proper.
So are, are you supposed to use that two million now to, to revi, uh, to revise your rate review program now? Because I know HHS designates our rate review as effective, right? And so that two million, is that for, you, 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 you use it only when, when you're saying an insurance company raises the, their premiums over ten percent? Or is there something that needs to be done now to use that, that two million, like what CMI is doing?
Um, I think what CMI is doing it a different way. Uh, I, I believe what we do is when the rates come in and they go through the N I C. Um, we, we look at those two and, uh, anything above the ten percent or ten percent and above is what draws our concern to our department. Because I, I think, um, the Public Health Service Act says that anything above ten percent, uh, we need to look at, we need to scrutinize.
So I know last year, late last year, you, you, you were, um, um, recording the media saying that, um, come this year, we would see an increase in, in premiums, right? I mean, you anticipated an increase and I tell you, that, that, that interview alone got a lot of, um, our people, especially the manucos calling and saying, how can that happen? When they have a, 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 a premium now that's good for a year, right?
Yes, um, the way we are looking at that is with the, um, the president's extension of the mandates. They've moved the dates to October first this year. So anybody who renewed their policies before those dates are given a one year extension. So they happen to September thirty, uh, twenty fifteen to see a rate increase.
So no, there's no, um, uh, increase in premiums from, 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 um, any provisions of this that would happen this year, this year?
It has to do with the way the, uh, essential health benefits apply to Guam. What it's requiring is the health insurance companies to, it's mandating, mandating them to apply these ten categories of coverage. Uh, for the, for the people who are insured. Um, now, right now, I think, um, FHB probably has to take care, probably has to hire, but it's not the ten categories. For us to use the ten categories, the rates are gonna increase drastically.
I know there was a, um, was there a letter or something from the Insurance Ministry to, um, to, um, get this thing waived or something? I, I remember seeing something and please, you, you can, you can jump in anytime, if any of you, um, I'm sorry, please.
If you're familiar with the letter that was actually prepared by, by the N I C in conjunction with our Insurance Commissioner.
If you can share that with us.
Well, wait, um, um, during the year of last year, uh, we've been working with the N I C. And they, uh, they, um, they looked at the territories and how the laws apply to the territories, uh, and the way it applies to the states. Uh, a lot of the provisions, um, especially the subsidies and the mandates don't apply to the territories, but the market reform does. Because the way the, uh, ACA was, was passed, um, the definition of a state in the ACA. Because the way the, uh, ACA was, was passed, uh, the defis- definition of a state in the ACA does not include the territories. But it amends the, uh, the, uh, Public Health Service Act to include the benefits, the reforms. So, we got these two laws, um, the market, uh, reforms apply, but the subsidies and the mandates don't apply. So, uh, in, in the fifty states and, uh, and DC, for the, uh, Obamacare to work, all these three have to be in place. Uh, with Guam, only the market reforms apply and all the subsidies and the mandates don't apply. So, we're stuck in this, uh, predicament, and this is what the white paper was from the N I C and a letter from the N I C to Catherine, to the list, the secretary, saying that this is a problem for the territories.
I, I, yes, I, I believe we do, but so, this letter, this letter, uh, was requesting what?
Um, um, I think it was just stating that the, this, the territories are gonna have a hard time implementing the Obamacare in the territories without the, the subsidies and mandates. That are part of the territories.
And so, was, was there a response from, from them, no?
From, 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 uh, Gary Coleman, uh, his response was, the law's the law, it, and the Public Health Service Act it applied, so they're gonna apply this in the territory. So, in effect, what it does is it raises the ra- it raises the rates of insurance companies, because they have to, uh, comply with the ten categories of the essential health benefits. So, with, with that in place, um, and the, and the insurance companies, uh, are mandated to, uh, comply with that law, um, the rates are gonna go up. If they don't raise their rates, then their profits go down, and their pro-
It's not the, uh, ten categories that's concerning, it's the safety, for the most part. For the most part, we already comply with, we cover people for hospitalization, we cover people for preventive services. It is the, um, the states and the territories, whereas to, uh, choose a plan, that would be the default plan, uh, to make sure that the essential health benefits will be complied with, you know? Uh, m- most of the territories and a few states did not choose a plan, so the federal government assigned a plan. And it's that particular plan that we gotta follow, and that particular plan is the richest health plan in the federal, uh, insurance government market. Uh, the average premium for that is about five hundred and fifty dollars a single a month, and that is the concern of the insurance industry, that we have to follow the essential health benefits plan that was chosen or mandated for us to be marketed on the small market. Small market is defined for this purpose of fifteen and less, uh, actively working employees, that it will cause a significant increase. And the other concern for the insurance industry is evidently the study that N I C put together. It is very unusual that the N I C will actually go out of its way to try to put together a study specifically for the territories. And the conclusion is quite sound, and remember that Catherine Sibylle, who used to be the president of the N I C some years ago, when she was the Insurance Commissioner of Kansas. So, for the N I C to put a paper like this together, and it was, this study was actually sent to the secretary, was also sent to Congress, and was also sent to the White House, because they are very concerned about the implications that this will have in the territories. We haven't seen the impact yet, and if you ask all of us in here, are the rates impacted yet? Uh, we can tell you that most of us are trying very hard to ensure that we don't impact the population as much as, as it should be. But sooner or later, this kinda worms that was open is gonna occur, uh, and, and rates are going to significantly increase, not because we say so, but because the actual regulators are saying so. And it's true, when you mandate insurance companies to comply with market reforms, uh, we are able to comply with that, but the offset of that was all of this population that was supposed to be insured, and that doesn't happen here. We also had other protections, a reinsurance market that insurance companies are able to get access to in the continental United States. We don't have that access, that was another protection for the insurance industry. So, this is a kinda worm study that has been open, and the impact, it will be felt soon. You know, some of us here could, uh, close our eyes and pretend that it's not gonna happen, but it's gonna happen.
I think that's, that is where our problem is, um, uh, yes, it, it, it's good for the people, but if, um, um, they compare it to like a three-legged stool. If two of the stool, the legs are not there, the, the stool is not gonna stand, so if we don't have the mandates and we don't have the subsidies, then, of course, rates will go up, and somebody has to pay for it, and, uh, I believe, uh, uh, actuaries have looked at this through the, um, insurance industries and are affirming that the rates will go up, uh, which is what the N I C is saying.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I guess it's an open question. Um, Art, in, uh, I guess the insurance industry, do you recommend that, because this mandate exists at this point, that we go back and then see if we can restate our position in terms of choosing a plan instead of having to be forced, uh, with the, um, the most expensive, the most comprehensive, I guess, at this point?
I wrote a letter to the Secretary Sabellis, um, on December tenth, asking that, um, through the studies of the N I C and, and, uh, the territories as, uh, the way we were funded, to either extend it so we can work out a better plan to, uh, to make this Obamacare at, uh, work for the territories or Guam, um, or, or exempt us totally, if they're not gonna give us the subsidies, to make this happen, uh, to exempt us, because if we don't do this, then we see an adverse, uh, uh, selection effect happening to the insurance company. The insurance companies are here to make money, they're here to make a profit. If they don't have that profit margin, they were close shot, I've seen this done in the past, when we had, uh, the storms, when the storms came in, and all the houses were blown down and torn apart, they paid their, their claims and they left on them. But, and this is what may happen to the insurance industry. And with this insurance industry, it, it ensures the individuals, individuals, um, are not mandated to have insurance, but when they get sick, they get sick tomorrow, they can just go up to plants and say, I wanna plan, I'm sick. They have to plan, they have to give them that insurance by law, and the Public Serv- Service, uh, Act says they have to get that insurance. Of course, rates will go up.
Art, is the subsidy currently under the stateside model as passed in law, is it a match or is it a direct subsidy?
It's, it's a subsidy to the state, but, uh, it's on the Affordable Care Act side of the law. And in that law, it doesn't, uh, uh, it defines state as the fifty states and Washington DC, it doesn't define the territories. So, when they say this mandate applies to market reforms, it amended the, the Public Health Service Act, which Guam falls under, because it defines, uh, the territories, Guam included, as a state.
So, I guess, I mean, this sounds to me like it's, it's really a diplomatic or an issue of diplomacy or an issue of rising to the level of Congress in terms of how this matter gets filtered up and filtered in to be put on the radar with regard to Guam having to comply with, uh, a law basically that we have no, we, I basically have half of the mandate. We don't have the second half, and so, I, I mean, I'm just, I, I, I think this roundtable is good, and of course, we're gonna gather the information, but it just seems like locally, aside from just taking it, there really is, you know, uh, I mean, I guess we need our own white paper, uh, but I wanted to, I wanted to explore one possibility in terms of other federal programs that we have, uh, through the federal government, uh, that are administered through public health and, and, and other agencies, and that's a, another match, um, you know, arrangement, typically ninety-ten, um, under most federal, um, requirements. And exploring, at least if we had something to bring to the table to Congress, we have the MIP program that is subsidized on an annual basis. If that were privatized, or at least a public-private partnership issued, to create a pooling opportunity to comply with having to provide all the insurance requirements, could the insurance companies meet that mandate? If that was RFP'd out, say for example, or, or conglomerate was put together on offering the most basic plans for compliance, and then go to the federal government and say, look, this is our match. You know, you don't set up any subsidy, you don't treat us like a state, yet you have other programs that allow for a matching, uh, grant, if you would, to comply with Obamacare. Would the insurance companies be able to manage something like that if that were put out?
Let me understand your question, you're, I'm gonna cite fifty million dollars that you took, Jim, from MIP? Is that how that, okay, so you took fifty million dollars and applied it to Medicaid?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that gave you essentially thirty-two million dollars in total Medicaid care.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what Senator Vice Speaker Cruz said earlier is that those individuals that were on our plan and found out that they could go to Medicaid, that's basically what they've done.
Okay.
Okay, so, they've quit our program to go join a government-sponsored program, um, yeah, if you're gonna do a, a Medicaid managed care and you give it out to the insurance companies, that's great, I mean, you might as well do, uh, MIP and Medicaid together. So, you know, that way, um, taking seventy million dollars and pulling it out, we certainly will look at that as, as a great opportunity. I guess the question that we're still struggling with here is that, um, you have two hundred and sixty-eight million, you took fifteen to, to apply to a program. Um, the question is, we have not heard as an industry that there is a Medicaid expansion program. Because that, that, just sharing it with our, our colleagues here, is that if the essential health benefit plan that we have now has to be implemented and the rates are too expensive, that means those individuals need an alternate plan.
Right.
By definition of PACA or ACA, the default plan was supposed to be Medicaid, slash Medicaid expansion, okay? The question we need to hear, I guess, and I think that's what Vice Speaker Cruz is asking, are we implementing Medicaid expansion? Because we then are faced with a situation like, you know, hey, um, you honestly, if you think you can't afford our plans, go to public health, they have a plan for you. And, and that's, I think that's the duty and responsibility of the government to tell, you know, the island residents, if you feel that your health plan, uh, is a little bit too expensive based on what you're, they offered you, uh, and none of us can come up with a rate that's acceptable for them, they need an alternate plan. And if, you know, they don't qualify for, for MIP, then they may qualify for Medicaid.
So, Jim, you're mostly using that for the purposes of, of the, you're, you're, you're not doing direct payouts then to the indigent program in terms of like hospital bills, care, whatever, or the like? I mean, the, the, the one argument that I've heard from a number of folks is, we're paying the most expensive at the end by subsidizing an MIP program when basically most of those people end up at the hospital, and they're not covered. Whereas if you created this pool and didn't go to Washington with hat in hand, otherwise saying, we have a program here, but match it by insuring all the uninsured with that, with insurance programs, now, now you're having people show up at the hospital that actually are insured, or whatever other managed care that they had, uh, with an insurance policy in hand to defray expenses, but what, what, what then is the, the entire subsidy of, of, of MIP being used for, Jim, I guess, is my question?
Not sure you understood that. Um, you know, MIP was, was a default plan for those people who did not qualify for any, any of the federal plans, it's a hundred percent locally funded.
Correct.
So, again, I'm confused about what, what it is you're asking.
So, so, so you're buying plans then for those who are not qualified?
No, we're not buying anything for anybody, we pay directly.
Okay. Then that, and that's my point, so I'm trying to ask you, Jim, if you were, if, if, if it were changed and the arrangement were to be that you'd RFP that out, and, and, and insurance was being provided to these same qualified persons?
To do that with the MIP qualified.
Okay.
I think, uh, and I think I would ask the legislature for permission to do that, uh,
Sure.
to make sure everybody's happy. Um, the Medicaid would be a little bit different, we're gonna have to deal with CMS on that.
Okay.
That'd be a substantial change to the plan. Okay, there are, there are models like that in the States, we talked about that the other day, there are some risk pool kinds of arrangements that, uh, that we could look at. And, and really, I don't really have a problem with that, I, you know, um, the only thing that I can tell you is that what we do with the money we have, our administrative expenses are very, very low. We, we manage a, a fairly, you know, sizable amount of money on, on about a four percent administrative expense. Uh, if we can get that same kind of savings and do this through, through an insured arrangement, that'd be fine. Uh, I think though, that the problem is always gonna be, uh, how much the feds will participate. If we do the Medicaid and the Medicaid, the traditional Medicaid program is only thirteen million dollars federal. Okay, and then we come up with eleven, and then for chip, it's four million dollars federal and two million, cause the kids get a, a better break as opposed to, uh, the match. But it's going to be, okay, we know that last year we spent seventy million dollars net, you know, but, uh, some of that was, a lot of that was federal money. You know, we're gonna be able to continue to do that if we have an arrangement with any of these insurers, you know, to, to make sure that they get, get paid.
Sure.
And, and that will, that's gonna require some real interesting negotiations with the feds, but I, I, you know, that, that's an option.
The, and that's what I'm saying, I, I, we're, we're, we have, we're optionless right now in terms of being able to sit at the table and say, look, this is what we've come, come up with. Um, and, and that's why I said public-private partnership, obviously, if you're managing it in that level, but at some point, I think it's gonna have to go out to the insurers to, to meet.
I would suspect anybody who fell, if we had a health insurance exchange, anybody who fell through that would automatically, you know, uh, be eligible for our programs. Okay, because in the exchange, the income limits, it runs out to four hundred percent, aren't, uh, some, you know, some of the, I mean, it was really, I mean, a person, I think, that, that has my salary, could have qualified for some, some credits. So, um, there will be people who will fall out of that, uh, and, um, the Medicaid expansion wasn't, was not intended really to, to catch those, you know, catch those people, there's, there's gonna be a group of people, income-wise, don't, you know, just cannot, it's just not a simple matter of saying, I can't afford it. Okay, it's, well, how, what is your income?
Right.
Um, and, and that's the problem, cause on Guam, we have people some, every day have to make a choice between buying gas and paying for insurance, but when you look at what their income is, they don't qualify for any program, and that, that's the thing we have to, to deal with and try to resolve. Whether the federal government's gonna allow us, again, that hundred and thirty-three percent of, of the poverty limit is really not a big, big bump. But, um, you know, and this is something we all have to work on.
And, and finally, the purpose of the pool and why I'm putting it out to the insurance companies is because that may be the catch to get out of the small, the number, that magic number that drops everybody down, if you're, if you went out and, and you were just basically covering all the uninsured at that point, creating one big program that everybody could either, even the insurance companies could pull in terms of providing whatever plans available to that indigent population, which is basically, I think, what the whole thing was designed for anyways. And then you're, then now, if you were, if you were in that pool, or that pool was created, you no longer have to worry about that category of the fifty and below, because everybody's one in one pool, which means one big number.
As long as we had everybody, I mean, that, that's the classic, we don't have everybody. That's why it'll work in the States, at least, it's, you know, supposedly an individual mandate, so everybody's gotta have it or pay a tax penalty.
Right.
Or employers have to have it, but then a whole bunch of employers got exempted, so, you know, I really, I don't know how, you know, this is gonna work, but, I mean, the beauty, I mean, actuarially, you do, you leave everybody in the pool. And whether they, part, part of them come to us or stay with the insurance, that's it, but when you have this, this kinda self-selection and ability to drop out and drop in, it's, it's very difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator, you know, one of the, um, I wanna recognize that you brought up a very good point about, um, looking into whether, if we, if we, um, develop a, a larger pool and, and perhaps getting the, um, the private insurance to, to, to run these services. I think we've, we've missed the boat on that, um, the train that's left the station, so to speak, because we had a, a one million dollar grant that, that Guam received, and, and I believe that was what this whole, um, study was meant to do, was to, to see whether, you know, what the viabilities are, what the alternatives are. So, I don't know if that's something that still could be revived, I don't know if we return that money because we, you know, we never used it. Um, but, you know, that, that was something that, that we've tried to push to, to see, because that's, that's, that's our, that's our predicament now, is we gotta make a case, right, um, to the federal government, and I'm sure that the industry has been doing it, Guam has been doing it, um, and now with the, um, with the National Association, um, of Insurance Commissioners has done it as well. Um, but, you know, Art, going back to your December, December ten letter you sent, which was last year, to, um, on the, on the essential benefits? December, on the December thirtieth, uh, what's the, um, you know, what's the, the likelihood that, um, you know, we'll, that Guam would get a favorable response?
Well, uh, this is not the first time I ask.
Sure.
I think with the territories, um, and beneficiaries of the territories, with the exception of American Samoa, there was Puerto Rico, Sina, my eighteen ninety-two, we wrote a letter to, uh, the states as asking for a delay on on the, uh, uh, application of the ACA. And they, uh, wrote us back and said, yeah, the Public Health Service Act applies to the territories. Uh, so that was more like a, no, we're not gonna allow you to be exempted. The second letter I I wrote is in December thirty, again, from Guam, asking for an exemption, and I, we haven't had a response. An exemption or a, a delay until we can determine how to find, and change some mandates to apply to the territories.
No, but wasn't there a specific letter asking, um, um, because, because I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, we failed to 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 submit our own essential benefits plan? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
The territory.
Yes, yes, sure. So, so what, um, the, 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 the request was?
That was, yeah, that request was also to see if we can use, uh, what the terr- Guam, uh, uses as the, uh, our basis for essential health benefits.
Yeah, and so that's something that's pending?
That's pending.
That was, but what's the likelihood? And maybe if you can also share, I mean, you have your people out there, um, what's the likelihood, is there any likelihood?
So, without law.
Can you get, can you come?
We, uh, we met with a lot of agencies and, uh, with a lot of the congresspeople, but, uh, the agencies are saying it's a political, uh, uh, decision, the politicians say, we cannot touch it, you know, uh. So, the likelihood is very, very small. I I gotta say that for the exception of Puerto Rico, the rest of the territories did not, uh, uh, submit an EHP and every single territory decided not to create a exchange, simply because of the amount of money that it would have cost the territory, number one. And the potential for the territory to have to come up with, uh, the subsidies for the individuals applying in these changes. That's the seventy-four or seventy-five million dollars that, uh, about a year, year and a half ago, uh, are estimated will cost just in subsidies for premium subsidies.
Yeah, I mean, we do know that there's some movement with, um, Congressman Kalili's office, um, Senator Murk- Murkowski, and, um, Congresswoman Donna Christensen's office to try to, uh, prepare legislation to ask for a waiver for the territories. We're still waiting to hear from Congresswoman Rinaldo's office, because they've been very silent on on our request to see if they're gonna be joining forces with them to ask for this waiver. Um, we're assisting as much as we can, because that's the only word we're hearing from at least the hillside, if we wanna call it that.
Right.
And any kind of, um, uh, I don't wanna use the word sympathy, that they're, they're looking for the territories. Most recently, Brian, you can share the one about Senator, um, the guy from Hawaii, that is willing to lend a, lend an ear, I guess?
Right, I think it's Senator, is it Brian or Dan? Schatz, he's a Democrat, uh, Democratic Senator from Hawaii, uh, from Congress. So, uh, uh, there was just an indicating, indication from the NAIC that he's very interested in the plight of the territories and is looking into, uh, backing us up, so to speak, so that's, uh, all the territories, uh. But other than that, there's been nothing else. Now, that was in a recent, uh, NAIC conference, Art?
It was, it was through, it was through an email from, uh, NAIC, um, Senator Schatz, um, is interested in listening to the territories and presenting their case to to him, so he can present it to Congress.
And if I may, Senator, well, uh, again, this NAIC paper is well crafted, uh, the conclusions are very sound, uh, and I suggest that, uh, something that could help would be a resolution from the Guam Legislature to say, uh, we are concerned as the, uh, NAIC is concerned, and we would, we would ask to be either excluded or fully included. I mean, full inclusion into the, uh, ACA, which includes the federal government providing us with, uh, subsidies for premiums, uh, the tax, uh, which is one of those that, uh, it is very possible that the government of Guam will have to pay for tax subsidies as the law is currently written. Uh, so you are losing tax revenue because you have to pay for those subsidies, but you're not also getting those subsidies from the, uh, federal government as each and every one of the single state is getting. So, a resolution from the Guam Legislature that is well crafted could help us.
I, I think you're on the right track, Mr. Chairman, in deference to your co- comments, we were given a million dollars, I think, to discover that we have another unfunded federal mandate. And the fact of the matter is, and I've asked this question before, so if we did nothing, what would we, what would happen? Be sued by the federal government?
Just one thing, I, because we keep talking about that million dollars, uh, and I just wanna clarify.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, the condition for that was, okay, we could do a study, and if we determined at the end of the study that we were not gonna have the health insurance exchange, we would have to return the money. So, that was like, you know, please, so we already, we're already at, we're at that point where we all kinda knew right away, we're not gonna do this because we can't afford it. So, why even try to spend any money that we'll have to return?
I agree with you, I agree with you, and it, and that, and that makes perfect sense, and and.
Exactly, and so, and to come to the same conclusion that we once again said, the reality is, is that we're, we're just gonna end up right back at where we started. We have an unfunded federal mandate that excludes the territories, that if the law would have applied to the territories, we wouldn't even be sitting. We would establish the exchange and move forward.
Thank you. And and I think, and, you know, and, I think we have too much mic, sorry, okay. I think, um, no, I, I think, I think, you know, and I respect everyone's, I think we're all entitled to our opinions and whether we, um, you know, wanted to, um, or we thought that it was the best way to to get a true picture, you know, that's still my position today. And I know it's, it's gone and passed, but but that's, you know, that, you know, that's where it is now, so, um, Art, you were.
I just wanna ma- mention that when, um, CMS writes letters to us, they use the grants that they're giving us as the uh, uh, carrot or meat to, for us to, uh, I guess, accept the ACA. Um, the, the tone of letter is, we gave them this, we gave them this, but we didn't use it. There, it's a, it's out there, it's for us, if we want to use it, to use it.
But it wasn't just there just to give it to, we had to apply for it. And so, us, to us applying for it, you know, we, we, you know, um, said that we wanna use it for for something. We wouldn't apply for it and just say to have it and then just return it.
When, when ACA first started, like, in twenty-ten, uh, a lot of the things were unclear to the territories. There were grants out there, if you didn't apply, you would not get it, so we went ahead and applied, uh, not knowing how ACA is gonna apply to the territories. Uh, as, as the years and months went by, uh, it got, we got a clear picture, and I think it wasn't until December twenty-twelve is when they finally wrote and said, this applies. Uh, but every, uh, e- e- every time before that, it was, uh, not clear, even to the NAIC. We even asked them for a special ses- session for the territories, so that we can know what's happening with the territories, and they said, nothing is for the territories at this time. We are working to implement, implement the, um, ACA in the, in the United States and DC.
I, I just, uh, with the grant, uh, uh, the grant specifically wasn't to find alternatives, uh, it was to decide whether the, uh, uh, establishing exchange would be, uh, viable for Guam. Um, and, uh, the Virgin Islands actually, uh, has indicated that, uh, they wish they had known that, or that was much clearer to them earlier, uh, 'cause they, uh, uh, regret, for lack of a better term, having to do that, they've gotta figure out how to pay back a million dollars along with, uh, a study that says, uh, an exchange is not viable for the Virgin Islands, so. Uh, again, we were just adding things up, seventy-four million plus, um, uh, at the time, it was thirty to fifty million because the federal government would not give us money either for hardware, software, and other IT, uh, infrastructure. That would be thirty to fifty million, so right off the bat, um, you know, it's a hundred and four, a hundred and five million if we had to, uh, happen to use that one million dollars.
Which is the reason why I asked the question, Brian, about the two hundred and thirty-eight million. If we were going to be made to return one million because we didn't do something, we didn't get the two hundred and thirty-eight million because they liked us. We got two hundred and thirty-eight million, and I'm, and I'm wondering what the conditions were. Because now that we've spent it, are we gonna have to repay the, what we spent if we don't decide that we're gonna do Medicaid expansion?
Right, those are two different grants, so, I think Mr. Gillen said he was gonna, uh, trace the, uh, history on that.
Okay, and so I guess, um, Jim, if you can get back to us on that, because that, that's very important, we've been talking about this two sixty-eight, but we don't, we can't get a clear answer on what this is and, you know, what's the, um, attachments to it. Okay, you know, and so, please, can we get, get it on the mic?
Solutions, the solutions are, a resolution gets passed supporting, uh, certain elements of either, uh, complying with the law, the three legs of the stool, or Plan B would be to allow us the option to select another, uh, another plan. And if they'll allow us to do that, we submitted the plan, which I believe, uh, in terms of market breadth, was the Take Care Plan, which doesn't have the ten essential health benefit requirements, and at least for that period of time, we avoid the essential health benefit requirements and the cost, incremental cost increases. So, there is, you know, some action that can still be taken, hopefully, to avoid disaster.
And and thank you, Jeff, and that's, that's very well noted with Frank, and we will make sure we, we, we work on that. And 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 please, that's why we're here, we, we wanna know what we could do, you know, there's really not much we can do locally. A lot of it is, is, is out of our hands, unfortunately, but if this is one that that you see as a viable way for us to make our small voices be heard, then, you know, we will definitely do that.
And for the record on that, Mr. Chairman, and I know that we have all sat through the congressional updates, and that was the, one of the more prominent, um, promises of our good Congresswoman, was to take any resolution passed by this body and see it through with regard to, uh, what, what is passed by this body. And so I think that that's only prudent, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to join you as the co-sponsor.
No, you'll, you'll, you'll get something by, by next week, you have, you know, we'll make sure you keep you guys involved, okay?
And I would say, gentlemen, please, and those at the table, could you circulate information into the committee, um, that, that, that would be, um, to, to expedite it? Um, in terms of your, your, your major concerns? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The mayors of the Marianas actually came out with a resolution, and, uh, that can be used as a template to, uh, you put together the Guam legislatures.
Thank you, Senator, I think, uh, we discussed most of the stuff, uh, uh, that was outlined on, on, on the, um, on the slide, uh, I believe the exchange was, uh, uh, we, we did look at that exchange and we found out that, uh, we used a twenty-ten database, uh, census, we put that in our database, and we found that, uh, it's gonna cost close to seventy-four, not over seventy-four million dollars, uh, in subsidies if we established the ch- exchange. On October first, uh, twenty thirteen, the governor wrote to the secretary of HHS and that we're opting out of the exchange. And market reforms, um, uh, that are in law in the, uh, Public Service Act, um, uh, includes guarantee issues, adjusting community, the pro- prohibition of pre-existing conditions, exclusions, restriction, restrict or eliminate the ability of insurers to engage in practices that exclude individuals with healthcare conditions from risk pools or to charge them more for coverage. Um, these requirements, again, would raise rates. These practices have made it impossible or very expensive for many individuals to purchase coverage. When the premium, when premiums for these individuals rise, they are likely to forego coverage, causing the experience of risk pools to deteriorate over time. To avoid these, uh, unintended consequences, PACA puts in place provisions that encourage the young and the healthy to remain in the marketplace and to maintain the health of the risk pools. Um, these, um, uh, PACA that applies to states does not apply to Guam, the individual mandates. These provisions include the individual managed, um, gen- subsidies of the low and in, uh, middle income individuals, which is almost everybody in Guam. Um, individuals purchasing coverage through exchanges, uh, we don't have an exchange, this is back in the states, uh, again. Transitional reinsurance and risk corridor programs, uh, a permanent risk adjustment program critically important to the access of PACA, efforts to extend coverage in the interest of Americans, again, these don't apply. While these provisions will help mitigate adverse selection in the states, none of them are likely to be implemented on Guam, leaving, leaving our markets vulnerable. As mentioned earlier, the individual and employer mandates do not apply to Guam. Guam will not establish an exchange in use for funding allocation to provide subsidies. Funding levels are insufficient to meet the expected needs. We est- estimated that seventy-four point six million dollars needed to provide subsidies to eligible populations to reach, to an exchange in twenty-fourteen alone, more than three times its allocation funding for the entire six years, uh, from twenty-fourteen to twenty-nineteen. That's twenty-four dollars, uh, million dollars that Jim was talking about. In addition to funding the majority of exchange subsidies, Guam would also have been required to cover the cost of developing, establishing, and maintaining an exchange out of its own funds. This is what Brian was talking about. Guam was not eligible for the one million dollar planning grants that states use to fund the exchange planning and analysis and activities. Guam was however eligible for Level One Exchange Established Grants. These grant funds, however, would have to be repaid if Guam used the grant and did not establish an exchange. As adverse selection pushes premiums higher, insurance, uh, insurance issuers serving the individual and small market groups are likely to withdraw, making coverage unavailable at any price. Uh, I just wanna say that the, the way PACA applies to the states and the way it applies to the territories, um, individuals and small market, uh, uh, groups are required by, by ACA to, um, um, uh, meet, um, with the es- essential health benefits plan, they have to follow that. With the large group, which is probably Gump Guam, and, I, I don't know what are the big companies, it doesn't apply. Anybody over fifty doesn't apply, so we have this disparity again with, uh, the way it applies to the states and the way it applies to Guam. So, if you're in, uh, trying to get a insurance market, you're an individual person, uh, these mandates apply. If you're in Gump Guam, you're in that part of the fifty over, it doesn't apply to you. I, I believe the reasoning behind that is, in the states, most of the fifty and over have the, uh, uh, essential health benefit plans in their programs already. So, we're in that dilemma, we're not, you know, there, there's a segregation between individuals, uh, less than fifty and fifty and above. This has already occurred in the USVI where both issu- uh, issuers selling coverage in the individual market stopped selling new coverage when it became clear that it would have to comply with the market reforms without the benefits of the individual mandates, subsidies to protect the market against adverse selection. As a result, consumers in the USVI individual market will not benefit from the majority of the, uh, ACA reforms, which apply to non-gra- non-grandfather policies, as you, there will be no coverage for the reforms to apply to. Without some action to prevent the cycle of adverse selection, information in PACA market reforms is likely to lead to the outset of what PACA intended. Higher premiums, less competition, more Americans who are remaining without getting insurance coverage, and insurance companies leading on. The first option would be to reconsider, uh, uh, would be a reconsider- reconsideration by the Obama administration of their determinants, determination that all PACA market reforms will apply in the territories. There's interpretation that PACA and Public Health Service Act mandates to not apply in the territories because of clauses. Uh, furthermore, this is the only interpretation that is consistent with the often stated position taken by PACA's congressional sponsors and Obama administration that these reforms are not possible without individual and the sub- and the mandate from the subsidies. If the Obama administration determined that reconsidera- reconsideration of its decisions is not possible, a second option is to delay or phase in of these provisions in the territories. This could be structured as a three-year delay of act of cabo- act of the. This could be structured as a three-year delay of applicabul- accabi- applicability for the guarantee issued provision, followed by a phase in of P O C A's ra- ra- rate rating rules over a five-year period. This phase in would allow the markets to gradually adjust to the market reforms and be consistent with other acts undertaken to delay the effect of date of provisions where immediate application would not be technically feasible, such as the employer mandate, exchange quality, employee force provisions. It may be necessary for the U S Congress to provide relief for the territories. Both of the above remedies could also be accomplished by less late of means. In addition, the U S Congress would take other steps to ensure that the implementation of the market reforms in the territories does not result in adverse selection by leveling a playing field between the states and the territories. This could be accomplished by revising P O C A's definition of state to mirror the definition in the Public Health Service Act, thereby including the territories and by revising P O C A section thirteen twenty three, which provides the limited funding for territories to fund exchanges, exchange subsidies, or Medicaid programs to provide a level of subsidies that will help prevent adverse selection. Guam could Guam could step in to provide some stability to its insurance markets by adding the missing P O C A provisions. These provisions include, most importantly, the individual mandate, the mandates, exchanges, and subsidies at a level that would be sufficient to ensure a balanced individual market risk pool that includes sufficient numbers of younger, healthier individuals to keep treatments from increasing remittance. These provisions could be politically difficult. However, given the cost for the territories of the funding subsidies and the divisiveness of the individual mandates in the state, adding the level of needed exchange subsidies left unfunded by P O C A in the U S V I would add twenty six two hundred and twenty six million dollars to a general fund budget of six hundred and seventeen million, an increase of thirty seven percent.
Thank you very much, Brian, would you like to?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, Mr. Chairman, the uh so some of the solutions uh I didn't get to put up there included um um pursuing um uh what's available with uh Senator Shots from Hawaii and seeing where that's gonna end up with uh uh using uh N I C connections, Art's a member, and also subcommittee member of the. So we can we'll go and pursue that, uh the second option or the uh one of the other options is to uh continue to work uh uh on the I G I A uh meeting. Uh September last year, uh there was a letter sent to Secretary Sebelius and uh Secretary Jewell uh at the interior requesting for a meeting. That also included uh not just the Congresswoman from Guam, but also um Puerto Ri- I'm the Virgin Islands, uh C N M I, and also American Samoa. Puerto Rico was not a uh signatory to that uh letter, uh that was in September, I I don't know if there's anything uh that's come back. Uh I've touched base with the Congresswoman's office and uh we'll do so again to see if we can get a response on this I G I A um uh meeting. And then uh I Art, and then another option or another item is to pursue the um the letter, Art, uh the December thirtieth uh with uh H H S and to see uh you know if we can get a response from them. Um I'm not aware of um uh Killey's uh and also uh Donna Christensen's actions, but I'll talk speak with these gentlemen afterwards to see if there's any way we can uh pursue that as well.
Senator, uh this information that uh Jim Gillian has provided to all of you, if I saw this, I would be scared today. You know, you're you're trending to spend a hundred and twenty four million dollars this year in Medicaid uh 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 expenses. And if you have to come out with forty five cents on the dollar, uh you re- but roughly have to come out with about sixty million dollars. I don't think you would budget it for that, and that's why you're trending here, in fact, already as it is, already as it is, you got fifty five million dollars in liabilities, so already you spent in in the first quarter of twenty fourteen, you already spent the entire budgeted amount, you know, I would be scared if there's some part of that is because of the mandates or the new illegibles and everything like that, you know, so again, I would be writing a letter, give us the one hundred percent uh um matching for those new illegibles as you said you would for for the states, you know, so. But I don't know if you guys have looked at this information, but it's scary, so.
I mean, we we can parse this down if you wanna see what that new new group had costs. Um but again, it's it's just got a lot to do with the way we work our health system. People do not access primary care, we don't have enough primary care physicians in in the public health setting, uh we don't have enough providers on the outside who are willing to accept Medicaid, except under acute circumstances, and again, the ones who show up at the hospital are very acute and therefore very expensive. But we've gotta figure something out, and uh it's not gonna not gonna get solved overnight. Uh we can, if there's an option to s- to return the rest of this money, we can do that, uh and then just say to people who need care, sorry, we don't have any more money, so I mean, you know, we really have to start looking, what what do we really wanna do here? Even if we lay it off to the insurers, they still are gonna have, you know, it's not gonna be free, okay?
Gonna run through this money in in two years, you know, rather than the uh twenty nineteen. So if you run out of this money, basically, the next the next thing is that you gotta pay a hundred percent on every dollar that you have here, so.
And Jim, we you just gave us this now, but we'll we'll look at it and we'll, if we have any questions, we'll ask. But this this doesn't include the the new um the the individuals that may be eligible after the the one thirty three, right? So this is just from people from M I P that you've that you've um switched over, right?
But a- again, you know, we we did a projection and and the the numbers probably won't be that great uh in terms of addition. Uh but I don't, again, it's it's really not the numbers, it's the acuity of the people who are in the system and and the the care needs. Okay, and and again, because of certain services not being available, we're having, you know, off-island services, there's transportation expenses included in here. Uh you know, and it's always these anomalies, last year, we we sent two two very seriously ill babies off at about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars just for the air ambulance. So, you know, you you get those those kinda things, um a- a- again, as a percentage, it's not that large, but, you know, it's just the the nature of our system. Even though at at Medicare rates, okay, it's the number of units that we're paying for that are very high.
And you know, I know you asked, um, you know, it's it's the way we we, you know, we need more doctors, right? But we also need a lot more prevention, and I'm looking out here at Chuck Tanner with the consortium.
Yeah, I'm not talking about more doctors, I'm talking about probably more community health workers, different kind of.
Yes, yeah.
And reach, you know, outreach and those kinda things, I mean, I mean, doctors are busy, they're very busy, okay? Uh and we need to find some other other way to get primary care.
Sure.
Okay, and keep them in the system, okay, and look, measure outcomes, we're not measuring we're paying for outcomes, we're just paying for services.
And it we talked about paying about paying for services. If I remember correctly, with some of the stats that you sent me last year, am I correct in recalling that you spent more money at renal centers than you gave to G M H in subsidies? I think it was thirty million and thirty one million?
No, we this is where the one time I'm very grateful for the federal government's presence. They pay Medicare pays most of the dialysis bill. Our portion was was just the co-payments and co-insurance, that people who are covered now under the the Medicare disability coverage still have some some deductibles and co-pays, we take care of that. So it's really very small, but the the total dialysis bill alone was two hundred million dollars. But thank thank goodness for Medicare, so this is one time, although I will say, that's just, I think that's fair rent for, you know, the property that the federal government has, so, you know, I think it's it it's okay, but I I'm glad they're here, I I really am glad they're here for that. Thank you, Francis, appreciate that.
Thank you, is there anyone else that that wishes to add anything? Senators, Antonio, Reagan?
I'm good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there is there anything else that you would like to? If not, I hope we didn't waste too much of your time and we had some some good information here, but we'll we'll definitely get that uh resolution circulated among this group. And if there's anything else, um we'll of course um call another meeting again, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.